Good morning. Today is the 12th day of March. Time is nine o'clock. The Board is in session to conduct its open business meeting. All three Commissioners are present. If we could get an introduction, starting over here.
Jennifer Hall, clerk's office.
Richard Beck, Development Services.
Zach Kirk, Development Services.
Samantha Wayley, clerk's office.
Brad Smith, Assessor's Office.
Sean Rain, Paramedics.
Of Party Operations.
Emily Burns, clerk's office.
John Bridge, clerk's office.
Tim Clanton, Treasurer's Office.
Sarah Lund, clerk's office.
Sandra Barbios, clerk's.
Marianne Burton, Treatment Court's.
Nicole Marta, clerk's office.
Katie Reeve, clerk's office.
Aspen Compton White, ask your office.
Elizabeth Duncan, Communications.
Atega.
Anthony Logsmith, clerk's office.
Trent Triple, clerk.
Beth Law, Treasurer.
Well, thank you. Okay, ma'am clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, no changes. All right, we'll start off with a resolution. I will open the public hearing on Resolution 2962. A resolution for sole source procurement of well installation and water monitoring from Ethos Connected. Is there any discussion or any question or discussion on Resolution 2962?
Mr. Chairman.
Just as a brief, and Zach might want to comment on this as well, but this is a, we are doing a monitoring of the Hubbard Lake outside, so that we can see how the ebb and flow of aquifers are in the county. This, this well monitoring is, is to really help us do that. We need to do it in the fall, right now, in the winter, while it's a low point, so we can see in the spring when it starts recharging. So that's why we're doing it this way, but I don't know, Zach might want to amplify that.
That, that's correct, we've covered it, yeah, from the water summits Hubbard came up, and as you know, the aquifer levels are dropping, and so this is a great project to see what can be done out at Hubbard, and check those levels, and then also be used to calibrate the water model as well, to study that.
As part, part of our water study for Ada County, which we're trying to get a handle on in terms of quality and quantity of water, so that we can help the valley develop properly and use, use water properly, so.
Well, good, all right, is there any other discussion on the, on the resolution? Or questions? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on Resolution 2962. And I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Resolution 2962 as listed on the agenda.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. I will now open the public hearing on Resolution 2963. ARPA Resolution 37 for Use of Allowable Expenditures and Return of Unspent Funds Related to the American Rescue Plan Act. Is there any question or discussion about this one?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, we, I would like to note that there is no return of funds on this particular resolution. We didn't know this, or I didn't know this, this prior to the meeting, so I apologize, but this is for three increases to existing ARPA awards and one new. The new is for EMS ventilators, which they are in need of. And then the other three are an increase to the Park Expo Design and Construction Management. An increase to an IT servers at the Pine Tree Data Center that were missed, and then an increase to RTUs at Benjamin Campus. Originally, we had proposed later four, but after review, they determined that all of them should be upgraded. So that's what we have.
Well, we want to keep Benjamin cool.
We want an airflow ventilation.
Cool, calm, and collected, yes.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Water, there, there's, there's a water one in here too, so I have to speak through the water.
There is?
Yes.
But it's, it's at Expo Park, where we have water available at Expo Park, and we're trying to surface water available, we're trying to figure out a way to actually utilize that for the new Expo Park. And so that's what this is for, is to help that, and I don't know, somebody might want to speak to that as well.
As opposed to potable water, that's what we've been using.
Correct.
Right. That'd be good, any, any questions or any opposition? I don't hear any. Okay, I'll close the public hearing on Resolution 2963. Call for a motion.
I'll move to approve Resolution Number 2963 as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've written motion, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We now have proclamation in front of us, I'll ask Mr. Davidson if he'd read the proclamation.
All right. So this is a proclamation from the Board of County Commissioners to designate the month of March as Certified Government Financial Manager Month. Whereas, the Idaho Centennial Chapter of AGA is a professional organization associated with and a part of AGA, which is a network of 12,208 members in 91 chapters in the United States and around the world, with 206 active members in Idaho representing state, federal, municipal, and private sector accountants, auditors, and financial managers. And, whereas, AGA Idaho Centennial Chapter members have responded to AGA's mission of advancing government accountability, transparency, and leadership, as it continues its broad educational efforts with an emphasis on high standards of conduct, honor, and character in its code of ethics, and making significant advances in both professional ability and service to the citizens of Idaho through their mastery of increasingly technical and complex requirements. And, whereas, the Certified Government Financial Manager Program of AGA provides a means of demonstrating professionalism and competency by requiring CGFM candidates to have an appropriate educational and employment history, to abide by AGA's code of ethics, and to pass a three-part examination requiring expertise in governmental environment, government finance, man, financial management and control, and governmental accounting, financial reporting, and budgeting. And, whereas, each Certified Government Financial Manager must attain certification by completing at least 80 hours of continuing professional education in government financial management topics or related technical subjects every two years. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Ada County Commissioners, Boise, Idaho, do hereby recognize the Certified Government Financial Manager Program for its impact on governmental accounting and financial management in Idaho, and proclaim March 2024 in Ada County as Certified Government Financial Manager Month.
I second that motion.
Okay. You've written the motion. All in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Who all is here for this? All right, you want to come take?
Anyone want to speak first, or tell us a little bit about?
Just appreciate the, the Board's recognition of some very hardworking individuals. They not only have to maintain and help develop the, the budget throughout the year, they also have to keep up on a lot of continuing education requirements, as well as all of the changes that are constantly happening, and happening in the realm of government accounting. You wouldn't think that there's a lot of things that happen in that realm, but there are. As administrations change, as things happen, there's new rules that always are coming down that they have to keep abreast of, and I appreciate that whole team, they're, they're awesome, they work really hard, and they always do it with an eye towards the, the public and, and keeping their trust in how we account for the taxes that we take from them, so. We appreciate them very much, so thank you.
Okay. Any else who wants to say anything?
Mr. Chairman, just as, not, not to steal the thunder of the Treasury, when the Treasurer gives her report, but we'll, we'll note that this month, the month of February, is example of how these people are doing their work for us and the citizens of Ada County. So I'll, I'll, I'll let them report on that one.
Okay. Okay, well, you want to come take a picture? I'll get a couple here with you.
Thank you.
You probably like this?
It is good.
Elizabeth old, Elizabeth old, children, children.
Right, no, right here, right. Wait, I'm blocking, I'm blocking our actual manager. Why? In the, in the. Okay, can I just? Here, this is perfect. Uh, we need somebody right about here, Don, can you stand right here? Too tall. Don, get over here, you can't see him. Okay. We got Trent, we got everybody. I'm kneeling.
There you go.
Thank you, one, two, three, look right here. Okay, and one, two, three. Thank you. All right, look at me for one photo. One, two, three. Thank you. Thank you. Sir. I do have to say, so there's only two of us, right, Tim and I? And Tim is actually in a webinar right now.
Oh, he's got some of the big certifications.
For his certification, so yes.
All right, well, good.
Well, thank him on behalf of us.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
Okay.
Oh, that was Trent, Trent.
Don't worry.
Okay, moving on. We've done the proclamation. We have some licenses. A new license, a license transfer, and several renewals. Is there any question or discussion about any of the licenses before we accept a motion? Clerk, do you have anything to say about all these licenses?
It's renewal season once again, so these lists are long, but all the paperwork is in order, and our team's done a really good job of keeping track of those things, and they're very proactive, that's not always been the case. And so I think the, the community is appreciative of us staying on top of these renewals, so none of them lapse, or people have a hard times with their businesses, so.
Okay, well, that's good, any other questions?
Hearing none, I, I would just second what the clerk just said, because we have, we have had incidences of where some, some wrinkles have been in this, and so we appreciate the fact that the clerk's staff keeps on top of this for, for our citizens.
Yes. Okay, well, I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, including one license, one license transfer, and 74 license renewals, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second that. Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. All right, now, we have with us our distinguished clerk, Mr. Trent Triples, I'm sure he's got a great report for us.
Always great reports, always something ahead on the horizon, obviously, we have the election coming up in May. We're in the middle of the filing window. It'll close this Friday at 5:00 PM. And then we'll be off to the races trying to develop the ballot, the hundreds of different variations of it with a primary. You can imagine with all the different parties, this is a heavy lift for our, our group right now. But they're up to the task. We're also in the middle, obviously, of budgets getting ginned up here over the next little while, so that's a focus of a lot of our team. And then I am being pulled often over the legislature for wonderful ideas from our legislators to fix problems that they perceive in the election system, so we're, we've so far had a pretty good track record this, this year, and and pushing back against some of, some of the stuff, and also passing some things that were beneficial for our citizens and, and, and candidates as well, so. We hope that that track record continues over the next little while while they're still in session. But you never know what happens over there, so, we'll knock on wood.
That's why some people call it the puzzle palace.
Yes.
Especially the last two weeks.
Yeah.
I see there's, there was a bill introduced relative to absentee voting, have you looked at that?
Yeah, well, there's been a couple, one most recently by Rep., I can't, is it Senator or Representative Kingsley? That got sent to General, uh, General Orders, or the mending order. Rumor has it that he's probably not going to try to resurrect it this year. There were some good things in it, but there was also some things that were pretty controversial. We tried to work with them, and I think next year we will have a better path forward, as we'll work together as a team to kind of fix some of those things, so.
Yes, go ahead.
Just, how many precincts are going to have ballot printing at this point? We're phasing into that, right?
For the ballot on demand?
Right.
There's going to be around 20 precincts on Election Day that we will move to ballot on demand. But we're going to print ballots as backups this time around, because I'm, I don't have the ability to, to quickly print ballots in-house yet. So I don't feel comfortable if something were to not go well with those setups that we have, to have a backup, so. We're testing that in kind of a, a beta test with some of the precincts. But we'll have ballots in place if we need them, much like we have paper poll books as backups to our electronic poll books, so.
Go ahead.
That's, that's, thank you.
I noticed there was a, a House Bill 652 that had, had to do with signature gathering for initiatives and referendums, have you reviewed that?
We have, we've commented on it as a clerks' association.
Is that, something is going to work?
It'll work for us, that's, we were very appreciative of the group that was pushing that, that they came to us and asked us our input on it, and we worked with them. Obviously, there's a political edge to it, obviously. We, we, as a clerks' association, maintain a neutral stance on it. After we were able to weigh in on some of the things, some of the deadlines that they were proposing would have put a massive increase in workload for us and the clerk's office, so they worked with us in adjusting some of those, those deadlines. Overall, you know, we, we're not in favor or against what they're trying to do, because we know there's a, a political flavor to whatever they're trying to do for the signature gathering. The, the piece that I think would go really well in the future is, one of their issues is they, they felt like all the signature gathering was dropped at one time at the very last minute, and it didn't give anybody that might be opposed to that particular petition a chance to review who had signed it and maybe have some sort of strategy to, to deal with it. With the 10x system statewide that allows us to track voter information, there's an ability within that system to track who signed what petition as well, and the reporting out of that would be real time. And so there may be some compromise in the future where it's easier for folks to see who's signing what petition, and then deal with whatever they want to on that end, and that would make our lives a little bit easier as well, because if someone comes into our office currently and they want to remove their name from a signature, or remove their signature from a petition right now before it becomes certified, we have a stack of thousands of pages, we don't know where their signature's at, and it's like, good luck, see if you can find it, and then we'll remove it. So the, the process is clunky right now, which, again, giving us more time to review those signatures is a good thing. So, again, that's why we're not pushing back on it, but.
Oh, sure, isn't there a provision to require that they be, that the signatures be presented every 30 days?
Yeah.
As opposed to all at once?
And that was the other thing that we had suggested, if, if they have signatures, don't hold them, submit them so that we can start processing them, and we're not slammed with 16,000 signatures on the last day.
I, I thought that was a good idea myself, but.
So what if you had an initiative where everybody knows they're going to get nowhere near the amount needed to put it on the ballot, but then you still have to process the signatures regardless, correct?
We do, if they turn signatures in, we're, we're going to verify whether or not they're valid signatures.
And are there, does they be required to turn it in, where otherwise they might go, well, we're not, we're probably going to fail, so we might as well not, might as well wait till the end to see if we get even the number required?
I'm sure there might be some that will try it out, there is no teeth to this, so if they don't turn it in in three days, it's not like we can reject, reject the signature pages, we're just trying to encourage people not to hold them until the last second.
Gives everybody a more clear outline earlier in the process.
All right, well, thanks.
You're welcome.
Are you going to be staying a little late on Friday to process all the last-minute filings?
I'll be there till the last minute.
You don't have to wait till Monday to, to know the?
We will, we will make sure that everything's posted on Friday.
Okay, good. It's a long weekend, otherwise, for people waiting to see.
Yes, it is.
Okay, well, thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, we now have the Claims Journal, any discussion or issues on the Claims Journal?
I'll move to authorized payment of claims on the Claims Journal dated March 8th, 2024.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have several personnel actions. I'll accept a motion on the personnel actions.
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda, and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioners' office.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And we have with us, Tri, the Assessor's Office.
Morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners.
You have any?
Great news, no tax cancellations today.
Hey, that is, that is good news, yeah.
So. I'll just give you a little update with keeping us busy, our property tax reduction, our circuit breaker, we're taking applications on that now. We're up to about 1,338 as of Friday, so this is a great program, it's for our low-income seniors, and our goal is to get over 5,000 this year, and the deadline's coming up April 15th, so try to get the word out there. You know, this really is a great program for those people that, you know, can't afford their property taxes.
Okay, well, good. Anything else?
Good, that's good news.
Yeah, yeah. How's your, uh, appraisals coming along?
Pretty good, it's, uh, you know, we've had a lot of action this last five years. Things kind of going crazy, this year is actually a little more tame, so our residential will probably be taking our values up just a little bit, not much, and, except for the, it's kind of a weird anomaly that we're having this year, our higher-end homes, like, um, higher-end, maybe one and a half million plus, those are still going pretty strong. So we'll be ticking them up quite a bit more. And then on our commercial side is kind of a mixed bag, so we got different groups going different directions, but nothing too crazy. Like storage condos, for whatever reason, those are just really sought after right now, so we're going to have some pretty aggressive increases in those. Other categories might be pretty flight, flat, or even going down a little bit, so, but nothing too crazy this year like we've seen in the past, so that'll be nice.
What would you be seeing for the average increase in residential?
Too early to say, but it's ticking up, I'd say kind of in a five, five percentage points increase, you know, but average is always scary.
Oh, yeah, average, yeah.
You know, if somebody goes up 10%, which will happen, and people, you know, get kind of hung up on when we put single data points out there, but I should only be at five, so, yeah.
The averages are scary, you can't you can drown in a lake that has an average of three inches of water.
That's so true.
Yeah, so. Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Appreciate that, yeah. All right, now we have with us our distinguished Treasurer, Mr. Beth Law.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, before we get to the monthly report, I do want to comment on some proposed legislation. It's legislation related to the transfer of real property from the county to another government entity. And just want to clarify the circumstances when such transfer might arise, there, there could be some misconceptions about how that works. And, and this is, this is important, there's procedural statutory guidelines governing the process when the county acquires property by tax deed. And one thing I'll note, as, as you know, from your practice and the prior boards have also practiced, when the county acquires when the county acquires property by tax deed, you are required by law to offer it for sale. Uh, it's very clear in the statute. Again, that's our practice. We offer those properties for sale. There's also a statutory process where the county shall apportion any sale proceeds to parties in interest and the owners. So I just wanted to clarify the point that, um, where, where this statute comes into play for this intergovernmental transfer, that's only in the circumstances where after an auction, there's been no bid. That there's no bidders, there's no sale, no taxes are paid, there's no surplus that the county could retain or pay out. Um, so just wanted to make that clear, that in Ada County, or actually in Idaho, under Idaho law, there's no retention of surplus. Just wanted to make sure that that was clear. I, I know you understand that, but.
You're responding to House Bill four forty-four?
Yeah, it, it's caused some, um, additional inquiries and confusion, um, because it's, um, it suggests that there could be a problem that just doesn't exist here.
Yes, I was, uh, I was kind of surprised at some of the news reporting because the bill seems to be, uh, a, a solution in search of a problem. And there is no problem.
In, in Idaho, we do have that problem.
The counties cannot retain any surplus.
And that's good.
Yeah, exactly, I agree.
In fact, in the, even in these, in these intergovernmental transfers, it costs the county because we have expenses that we incurred and we don't get the tax. And so it, it's a cost to the county, not a benefit. Am I correct there?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
So in the unlikely case where we auctioned a house, nobody bought it, we can transfer it to another government entity, but if that entity sells it, are they authorized to keep the proceeds?
Oh, so if it were transferred to another government?
Yeah.
I, I'm not sure. I think this, this transfer is related to the transfer from the county after a tax deed. And I would say we, we've never, the circumstances where this comes up would typically be an odd lot. I've never seen this happen with, with a residential property. It'd be those little slivers of land that aren't sold, but now if it were, uh, residential, we could just re-auction it for sale. Just attempt another auction.
And all those little, so we've got a bunch of little slices of land that have nothing on them because they didn't sell at auction that we technically own. If somebody shows up years from the time it's transferred to the county and ends up buying it, or do we still give the proceeds above and beyond our cost to the owner of that property?
I am not aware of circumstances where we've done that, uh, where we've actually sold them years later. I, I'm not sure.
And where there's been any proceeds.
Right, yeah.
They just kind of accumulate in our portfolio, I guess.
Right.
Nobody wants them.
Yeah, often they're, like I said, they're odd lots, um, might not have access or.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Um, we, we've had a couple where we've looked at, one of the challenges, a lot of times those odd lots are owned by a developer entity who's holding the property, who's no longer exists. And so when those circumstances arise with the statute, we, we do go through a process to try to identify who would be entitled to those surplus funds and the other big circumstances, but we, there are some properties that the county owns that they've had for years from tax deed and you have a dam, right, that's from seventy-four, but that nobody, that nobody wants to buy, and so when they eventually are able to sell those or convey them to an adjacent property owner, that sometimes can present challenges, but the effort is made.
Legally, we're, we're on the hook to give the proceeds in perpetuity if we take property by tax deed.
Under the statute, yes, that's, there, there's an order for distributing those funds, and so we follow that statutory order of priority.
Well, and it's not just to the previous owners, it's to any party in interest. That's the reason that we get a title report to determine if there's other property, other entities in, in that may have an interest in the property. I mean, so, so I know it rarely happens, but the news reports were off on this, uh, issue. Thank you.
Thank you. And now our monthly report.
Yes.
Want to miss a chairman, Commissioners? I'll have copies.
Fine.
So, so this month, if you look down at the bottom in the middle, you should have a page number. And hopefully it showed up on there because I made a couple copies and on the copies that didn't show up, but this is gonna make it a lot easier as we review this. So, uh, going forward, you should see those page numbers on there. Uh, this month, we, we did have one maturity, uh, three million dollar bond matured, so we also had a new purchase. We reinvested three point, uh, I think it was three point seven million. And, uh, one thing I'd like to sort of highlight this month, since we have these page numbers, it makes it much easier. Uh, if you go to page seven, or sorry, page eight, but page seven is the potential calls, which we don't expect to really see any calls come in. Uh, because the, the Fed's been holding the rates steady, we probably have to see a pretty decent drop before we got anything that was called. But on page eight, one of the things we do here, and, uh, just to help you and understand our reporting and the way we examine it and interpret it, uh, in the calendar year twenty twenty-four, you can see we, we're gonna have thirteen point one million dollars coming in. And we just aggregate that here in this bar chart to show you the total, but if you wanted to go, um, one page behind that, it breaks it out, and this is where you would see those maturities. So on the very first page of page nine, the first five, uh, bonds that are listed are the ones that are gonna mature in, uh, calendar year twenty-four. And if you added those up, you'd see that's the total of the thirteen point one million. Uh, another thing that's interesting about this report is if you look at the very first line, for example, uh, we call that one, uh, investment number TR twenty nineteen eleven, and what that means is, uh, treasurer, uh, we purchased that in twenty nineteen and it was the eleventh purchase we made that year. So that's just our naming convention that we use in our investment tracking software. And as you can see, um, July second of this year, we're gonna have four million come in. It shows a stated rate, that's the coupon rate on the bond, which is one point seven five oh, and if you look through there, you'll see the, the stated rate on those five that are coming in are pretty low compared to what we're seeing now. Uh, but, but again, that's the stated rate, that doesn't tell us the price we paid. So what we're interested in is our yield to maturity. So we either paid a premium or a discount on these. And, uh, if you went back, uh, a few more pages, and let me just find that real quick. Uh, so this one starts on page fourteen. This is a breakdown of all of the details of our bond purchases, our treasuries, our mortgage-backed securities. And if we go to look for that one, TR twenty nineteen dash eleven, they're listed in order based on what type of bond they are. And this particular one is the very top of the page of fifteen. And, uh, you see it there, TR twenty nineteen eleven. And if you scroll across there, you'll see the yield to maturity on that is one point six one four. So that means that we paid, uh, we, we paid a discount on that. At the time, the prevailing rates were uh, such that, um, we, we got it at a discount. Or, sorry, uh, we paid a premium, and so the stated rate being one point seven five, we're only getting one point six because we paid more than the four million for it. And I just wanted to point that out in case you're reviewing these and how to interpret this. But what this also means is, uh, in fact, I, I jotted down those first five that we're gonna get the return to thirteen point one million in this, uh, calendar year. And, uh, from the top through those five, it's one point six, one point six five. The treasurer is point five five two, so only fifty-five basis points. At that time, that's what they were going for. And then one point six again, and then one point seven two eight. And so what that means is since those are coming in this year, we'll be able to take that thirteen point one million, redeploy that in current yields, which are right now maybe around five, four and a half, uh, just depending. And so these higher interest rates, again, we've talked about this, it, it helps us as a county to generate more revenue. And if we went back to our very first page, um, where we list all our investments and the yield to maturity totals about four point three, what'll happen is these roll off and we redeploy those in higher-yielding instruments, uh, that'll tick up. And so it's been, uh, beneficial to the county. The, uh, Consumer Price Index came out today a little bit higher than what they had expected, it's point zero four. I think from June or July through December of twenty twenty-three, they were seeing a monthly increase there of about point two and point three, so it's actually trending upward. And we're still more than fifty percent higher than the, the, the Fed's target of two percent inflation. So now it's likely that we won't see as many cuts as they had anticipated, but again, it's data-dependent and they're, uh, pretty flexible about how they, they approach it. Uh, so anyway, I just wanted to have an opportunity to kind of explain a little further since we got these page numbers. And I'll see if we can even move it up a little bit closer because when I copied them, they, they sort of fell off. Uh, but overall, the county's investments are, are doing well. We have another purchase coming up tomorrow, which you'll see in the next month's report. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to.
So, go ahead. So that, you, you, you were saying this thirteen million, the top five is a fifteen million, we're gonna be reinvesting that fifteen million?
That's right.
Uh, the anticipation is that it's gonna be increased interest, correct?
From the, the current holdings, yeah, much, much higher.
Based on that, one, the status of the situation that we're anticipating as well as the current, current investment. So, i- i- that will be then reflected in next year's fiscal year's income off of these?
That's right. So, uh, I can't remember, I think the first one was four million in July. Uh, what'll likely happen is that four million will come in, we'll identify a new, uh, purchase, whatever makes most sense at that time, and we'll purchase that, and then, of course, we'll start getting coupon payments on that. If it's a mortgage-backed, we'll get monthly payments from that. And so we'll see, uh, an uptick i- in the overall yield for our portfolio because we're getting rid of the lower yielding and increasing.
It's increasing, okay.
When we do our, uh, projections for interest, uh, we factor those things in as best we can. We don't know exactly what the, uh, rates will be, but we do kind of look at the Fed's funds rates and, and, uh, for the next two years to sort of determine what we can expect to see.
And I'll just add on that note, um, even though we're able to reinvest at higher rates, it, it's not all ongoing.
Exactly.
It's not ongoing, yeah, it, it will really depend on market conditions and, um, can't really rely on it as ongoing.
Not guaranteed. So this, this February, two million dollars?
Yeah, we've seen a big bump up there.
Where did that come?
And, and that's on page six. That is, uh, because the additional revenue we received, uh, from LGIP due to the tax collections, because during the tax collections, you know, we're, we're accruing all that, it's building up, and we're looking at three, three hundred and seventy million dollars sitting in there. And at the yields on the LGIP, which is on the, also on the front page at the very top, that's five point four, uh, and so that, that's why you see, and you'll see that twice a year, uh, during our, our tax collection periods.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else?
That's it from the Treasurer's Office.
All right. Do we have anybody from the Coroner's Office here?
No, actually, he's, he's sick, so.
Oh, really? He did submit a report, which we appreciate. They're always busy. All right, well, moving on, uh, we have the approval of the minutes from the February twenty-seventh meeting. I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, we have, at Expo Idaho, we have, uh, an interim event. Is there any question or discussion about this interim event? No, I don't accept a motion.
I'll move to approve the one interim event agreement as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye. Sounds like an interesting, uh, event.
The residence is fair, yes, sure. It's in September as well. Okay, next up, we have the Parks and Waterways. We have, uh, four, uh, events at, at the Park Education and Event Center. Is there any questions on any of these? Okay, hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the four Barbara Park Education and Event Center agreements as listed on the agenda. Authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, and last, uh, not last, but next to us, we have twelve agreements. These agreements have been reviewed by our lawyers and by, uh, all Commissioners. And, uh, is there any questions or any issues that, uh, anyone has about the agreements?
Mr. Chair, we have one for warrant, warranty, surety agreement between Ada County and City of Meridian for new coroner's facility. Does anyone, any comment on that one?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we, uh, as we wrap up the coroner's facility, uh, water lines that come onto the property, uh, we grant an easement to the City of Meridian, and those water lines need to be maintained. Uh, typically, um, what happens is the developer will put down ten percent as assurance that these pieces of waterline can be maintained for a period of two years, if I'm not incorrect. Um, we have an interagency agreement that we signed with the City of Meridian that, uh, we give them assurance that we will maintain, uh, those water lines on our dime, uh, for the two-year agreement. So we don't put down, uh, that ten percent, we just make the agreement that we will, um, maintain those water lines for that period of time. And that's what that agreement outlines.
So we are the surety?
We are the surety.
Therefore, we don't pay a premium?
Correct, correct. Yes, sir.
All right, okay, good question. Any other questions or issues on any of the agreements?
Looks like we have one for Treatment Court. Ada County and Insight Architects for Trial Court Administration Treatment Court Building Tenant Improvement. Do you have any comment on that from the, the courts?
Commissioners, yes, I can address that. So, uh, during the process of, uh, having this, uh, addition done, we, the TI, we, uh, you know, we kind of kept this project to a, a minimum scope and we designed to, uh, a, a smaller budget. But, you know, with the amount of population and the amount of people that are gonna be visiting the center, you know, just the right amount of bathrooms per code is not gonna be adequate for the amount of people that are gonna be there during groups. And so we're adding some additional bathrooms, uh, instead of using the overflow, the UA bathrooms for overflow. So that, uh, you know, it, it just poses a security, a risk for the clients that are in there to use those private bathrooms as, as overflow bathrooms.
I think we talked about that when we were on our tour, didn't we, or you showed us where we needed some extra ones?
We did.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or issues on any of these agreements? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
I'll move to approve the twelve agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Okay, we have a, uh.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would just like to, uh, the last four agreements with Lumen.
Yeah.
Just, uh, congratulate the, uh, the staff for working through a long, laborious process with Lumen in terms of getting that approved. These, these agreements were tentatively on our agenda and then they had to go back and, and jockey around, and it's been a frustrating process for staff to do this, and so I would just like to thank staff, both the PA staff as well as the IT staff for that Lumen. And just as a, an aside, the legislature might be interested in looking at that whole, uh, process that, uh, that, that required them to go through those, jump through those hoops, so. Anyway, it's been a very frustrating process, just like congratulate the staff for going through that.
I'm sure they're seeking our counsel.
Yes.
All right, thanks. Okay, next up, we have the, uh, Indedent Services Item. I'll accept a motion on the. Indian Services item. I'll accept a motion on the Indian Services items.
I move to accept the recommendation of the Indian Services staff as listed on the summary of cases dated March twelfth, twenty twenty four, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Well, second that. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Okay, we have a a miscellaneous, it's a workers' compensation settlement. Is there any questions or discussions on that?
No, I I think this was, I think this was a law enforcement related one, correct? Fairly, we get workers' compensation just like any other business that we have to sign off on.
Yes. Any any other questions? I'll accept a motion.
I'll move to approve the settlement documents for workers' compensation case number IC two thousand eight oh three six seven eight zero and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Unless there's any further business, is there any further business needs to be brought before the board? Hearing none, we'll be adjourned. Thank you. Good morning. Today is the twelfth of March. The time is nine forty eight. The Ada County Commission is in session acting as a Board of Ada County Emergency Medical Services District for its weekly open business meeting. All three commissioners are present. We also have with us.
Sean Rain, paramedics.
John Triple Clerk.
NIT guy. Okay, Madam Clerk, I already changed this to the agenda.
No, there are not.
Okay, our first item is a Claims Journal. I'll accept a motion on the Claims Journal.
I'll move to authorize payment of claims as listed on the Claims Journal dated March eighth, twenty twenty four regarding EMS expenditures.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have nine personnel actions and seven promotions. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda, let the summary sheet remain on file in the commissioner's office.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have the approval of the minutes next. I'll accept a motion on approval of the minutes.
I'll move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Next up, we have a grant application. Grant number twenty four oh two A. Equipment, right?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, that is for some training mannequins for us to be able to to train on specifically maternity patients, pregnant people.
That would be maternity patients. Okay, any any questions or issues?
Is this a, is this a grant that not, you just routinely get, or is it?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Daley, this one's from the Healthcare Coalition, and we've received several grants from them, mainly for mannequins. And that's been very helpful for us over time.
Do you have to outreach to them, or do they kind of offer their grants for your kind of?
We participate in the Healthcare Coalition, so when a grant comes up, we know that we have a need and will apply for it, so sort of both. But we're we're an active participant in that process, so.
Okay. All right. Need a motion?
I move to approve grant number twenty four oh two dash A, authorize the online completion and submission of the grant number two four oh two slash A by Jeremy Shabbat, and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we have an agreement, agreement number fourteen six hundred four dash two four. It's an amendment and renewal agreement, participating memorandum of understanding between Ada County Emergency Medical Services and Washington Baltimore High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area.
Okay. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, this is a a contract that we've had for a few years now. And what it does is it actually takes our data from our records management system, ESO, and they find those records to deal with an overdose. And it provides that data back and puts it into what they call OD maps for overdose maps, and and it just allows us, law enforcement, the DEA, to kind of identify high intensity areas where maybe more overdoses are occurring. And so we can focus efforts on, you know, interdiction and maybe education of of those people that live in those areas. But it also, you know, allows us to to see kind of, is there a hotspot that that we're dealing with as far as those overdoses go?
Okay. Is there any?
Question?
Go ahead.
Does this help us, because it's Baltimore, I mean, it it's a national thing, so.
National.
Does it help us coordinate?
It does help us coordinate, you know, with, it's really kind of led by the DEA. It was a program they started several years ago. But it does help us coordinate with the law enforcement and potentially even the DEA to identify those areas and you can look, it doesn't give you very specific locations, but it gives you a a generalized area that, hey, there's something going on over here. And so over time, if you see an area that really didn't have any overdoses, and all of a sudden you see them popping up, it's like, hey, something's going on over here that wasn't going on there previously. And it allows us to focus our efforts on trying to to either get rid of the drugs or, you know, try to help the people that might be affected by addiction or what have you, so.
Especially when they're adjacent states that are close.
Yeah.
Like Spokane, Ontario.
Yeah, yep.
Okay, is there is there a motion?
I'll move to approve agreement number one four six zero zero dash four dash two four as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign doc, appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll get an EMS update.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, two quick things. One, I want to say thank you for the resolution on the ARPA purchase of the ventilators. That's gonna be a big help to us. That these new ventilators with the HEPA filtration and just the sophistication that has come around. They're battery powered, so you don't have to have an oxygen cylinder to power the things. It's pretty, they're pretty good. Get a piece of equipment to have. Next Tuesday, or sorry, Thursday afternoon at two o'clock, I'll be down at the State House. Our bill is gonna be heard in Health and Welfare, Senate Health and Welfare on Thursday afternoon, so. We've been kind of trying.
Which bill's that?
The EMS Sustainability Bill. It's Senate Bill fourteen sixteen. So I'll I'll be down there. I don't know that I'm going to testify. There's been a lot of discussion this year about maybe not trying to make it too great state of ADA centric for the committee hearing. But I'll certainly be down there in support.
Okay.
That's all I have for today.
The bill on increasing the fees is dead?
Which fees?
The.
Nine point one.
Oh, I I wasn't aware of that.
I I there was a question.
Oh, okay, yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Daley, I haven't looked at that bill lately. I know there was some controversy over kind of the amount of increase that they were after.
One to three dollars.
One to three dollars, and and so I don't know if they're gonna have to, I don't know if it's in the amending order now, and and you're gonna have to come back after it next year, but that was one I was watching earlier, and then when our bill for EMS sustainability started kind of taking precedence, I've been focusing most of my efforts there, so.
Do you ever see the need for you to have that Oculus system?
Mr. Chair, I'm not sure what the Oculus system is.
That's the one we 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 heard from Meridian that they're putting in.
Oh, the the GPS, yeah. It's it's an interesting thing. I'm glad that Meridian is gonna be the guinea pigs to see how well it works. Just from what we've heard, you know, where it predicts your routing based on turn signals and all that kind of stuff. You think about Eagle Road, they have those barriers that are tall enough that you'll high center an ambulance because we've done it. You can't just cross the barrier and take on the oncoming traffic with your lights and siren to get people out of the way, and so you get kind of stuck in there at times, and so according to the company, this would clear that traffic out, you know, a minute or two before you even arrive there. We on our vehicles, if you've ever noticed a police vehicle or a fire truck when they're running, they have a a strobe light that's that's going, it's just a white strobe. That's what's actually hitting that optocom device on the the signal, and it kind of looks like a little bird that's sitting on top of the the arm that comes out on the traffic light. Ours are actually filtered, and so they don't hit them from quite as far out, and the reason we do that is we will there are circumstances where we'll transport a patient and change the lights in our favor without running full lights and sirens, because that's dangerous. If you have somebody having, say, a heart attack, just that having the the lights and siren going actually can aggravate the 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 circumstances, so there are a lot of times that we'll turn that on, but you don't see the strobe, because sometimes that strobe is confusing to drivers. They think maybe you're going emergency, maybe you're not, but they don't see it. So it'll be interesting. I twenty four ambulances, and what was it, at eight hundred thirty thousand dollars for ten years?
Twenty four.
Not twenty four ambulances, twenty four vehicles.
Or vehicles.
So that'll that'll be obviously another pieces.
Eight hundred thirty thousand for ten years.
Because once we install the 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 strobe light on the vehicle, we're we're pretty much out of the cost portion of that. One thing that has worked in Ada County paramedics' favor over the years is we've never been we've not paid for any of the intersections. The fire departments have largely paid for the intersections to be built and or to have the optocom system put into it. And so we put in the strobes, we have to take the rigs down to ACHD. They program it and then allow that vehicle through, but it's pretty sophisticated, even with the strobe, they can tell what vehicle it is. So you can't just buy a strobe light off of eBay and put it on your own car and start changing lights. When they first installed it, you could do that.
Oh, really?
But they they stopped that. I thought it was twenty plus years ago. But they 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 do it, and, you know, not surprisingly, Ada County paramedics is the largest user of that optocom system by far. Probably by tenfold at least, just because we're so busy. And you think about an ambulance that might be running from Kuna all the way to downtown Boise to take a patient down there, they're hitting every intersection between there, those two points, and so, yeah, we use it a lot. But it'll be interesting. I'm, it it looks neat, but neat costs a lot of money, and, you know, it I I do wonder how much it's actually gonna save on response times.
Well, that's what would be interesting to see. They'll be able to.
The data actually produces.
They'll be able to collect that data. See what, see what.
A lot of it is, if you think about the the pieces and parts from when somebody calls, the dispatcher has to do their job, that takes some time. We get notified, and that's what we call shoot or turnout time, and that's the time that it takes us, you know, if you think about in the middle of the night, you have to get up, put your clothes on and get out in the ambulance, and the goal for that is a minute. But sometimes, you know, in the middle of the night's a little longer. But that's where historically we've been able to really reduce our response times by crews doing that portion really quickly and really well, so. But we'll see.
We're good. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be adjourned.
All right.
Thank you.